And it is because our properties are worth nothing. When a plant manufacturing company goes up in our yard, or an outback goes up next door to our house, our properties are worth nothing.
Well, I can just politely disagree that your property values are going to go down. I would submit to you that your property is going to be worth a lot more.
But you said that about the greenhouse.
Well, okay, well, let's take the greenhouse as a question. You know, I looked just this afternoon, I thought that question may come up. But, you know, a gentleman, I think that y'all well know, I won't call him by name, I think just sold his property right next to the greenhouse for four hundred thousand dollars, which was a hundred seventeen dollars a foot.
After it's been appraised and then he could not sell it.
I would submit to you that a hundred and fifteen dollars a foot in, on ninety-six is above market.
But it's not right now.
This was last year.
No, no, if you're talking about the same gentleman, we're not, we're not.
You're talking about land.
No, it's not, it's a residential.
Is the house?
Yes.
You're, you're giving them the value of the whole, whole thing.
I am, it was appraised at, obsessed at, you know, three fifteen, it sold, it sold at a hundred, four hundred thousand, so the gentleman did not lose money.
But he didn't make it to the critical.
I think that's up for debate.
That's, that's, I think that's, uh. Could you educate me on, you use the term willing seller, willing buyer, I understand willing seller is a current property owner. Who is the willing buyer? Is it Peach County, is it the development authority, is it another entity?
The development authority Peach County is the buyer.
Okay, and where is the money coming from for that?
From grants from the state.
So the state is writing you a check up to X amount, go buy property, so at that point, county, the development authority would own that property if it's rezoned tonight. Sale go through the, the development authority will then own it?
That's correct.
And then they would turn around and sell it, or sell portions of it to buyers coming into this point.
Yeah, I just got, and there's gonna be a sewer treatment facility on this property also?
To be determined.
It's in the plan.
Well, like I said, guys, it's a conceptual plan, the only thing I can say about conceptual plan is I guarantee it never ends up that way, you try to get an idea.
Oh, I, I own property in that square.
I don't know what you're talking about, but the existing treatment plant is right here. We have looked at expanding that treatment plant, possibly building a new MBR treatment plant. They may not need one based on what the wastewater demand is on the project, you know, we're just not gonna go out and.
But if you say it's gonna bring thousands of jobs, thousands of people have to go to the restroom, and it's gonna have to go somewhere. So will the treatment plant that's currently down there, will it be able to absorb that workload? It's just a small number.
Some, some have very little, I mean, the human waste demand is not large, I mean, you're, you know.
Hey, I've been in my house, but you know. I'm, I'm just saying that realistically, realistically, if what you're proposing, the job increase, all the folks coming, right, that's a big seller. I'm not even saying two thousand people are gonna be there in one day, I'm just saying five hundred people are gonna be there in one day, they have to go to the restroom. We, unless there's some kind of unknown vacuum tube that runs out, something will have to be created on, on the site, only because you marked it there. I know this is earlier, but I don't know why you would present it if it was not considered.
Yeah, I mean, companies got, we gotta know where utilities are, I mean, there's a sixteen inch force made that comes from the sod farm, you know, for developing out, out on ninety-six again, to the existing treatment plant, and it's treated and discharged into Bay Creek. So we're looking at alternate locations and ways to be able to discharge wastewater outside.
And that kind of leads me into, so as you're speaking, well, to your chart here, your graph, so just so everybody understands, it's not just one thing, it's like a growing complex, like true complex. It's got water treatment, rail coming in, manufacturing facility, parking, possible outbacks. So it's not like, it's just not just one industry, correct? It could be a platform.
Typically, it's just one, on sites like this.
Well, um, so I, I feel that's, okay.
But you're saying the plans are fluid, there's no definitive of what's gonna be.
I said typically, sites like this, mega sites, it's a one user deal.
Okay, so let me read this, this is from National Geographic, it was published in November of twenty twenty-one, so just a few months ago. And it contradicts what Mr. Walker's saying about the environmental impact. This was an article written about fabricating manufacturers for solar panels, and I understand he's saying that that's not coming, but he, you know, put off the environmental issue on the EPA, and this is what this reads. Fabricating the panels requires caustic chemicals such as sodium hydroxide and hydrofluoric acid, and the process uses water as well as electricity, the production of which emits greenhouse gases, it also creates much waste. These problems could undercut solar's ability to fight climate change and reduce environmental toxins. A new ranking of thirty-seven solar manufacturers, the solar scorecard shows that some of these companies are able to do better than others. However, none of them are able to fully eliminate the waste products that are coming out of these facilities. So how are you as the commissioner is gonna guarantee that whatever goes in there, isn't gonna environmentally impact the residents around the facility?
And to follow with her, I spoke to the riverkeeper in the area, and he says that Mossy Creek is a watershed. It is a watershed, he said, there's no doubt about it. So even as much, you know, security blankets that can be put in place, you know, catch retaining ponds, so on and so forth, treatment, at the end of the day, water still goes downhill. And so it will go into Mossy Creek at some point in time, doesn't matter if it's clean water, dirty water, it's gonna end up there. So when you say a mega complex, if you tell you it's one individual out there, easy to manage. If you have multiple individuals out there, now you've created a problem, because anybody who has kids, one kid's easy, five kids is a different story. So you've now increased your oversight into ensuring that all these individuals adhere to an environmental friendly, you know, industry. Because my idea of being environmentally friendly might be different than their, their idea. Like, I might toss my oil out in the yard, when I change in my truck, one person might take it recycling, it's different opinions. Because he's like, really, if I throw it on the ground, it's really not that big of a deal, it ain't hurt nothing. So to say that the watershed, that Mossy Creek, isn't a wetland, that's, that's, I wanna say it's not a true statement, I would just say that the riverkeeper say otherwise. So in researching this, they told me, unfortunately, there's not much you can do until something's happened. The Water Protection Act doesn't really stop growth or development, all it does is, once it happens, they try to force them to comply with the federal regulations after, after the damage is done. So that's, that's the best part about that act, it really isn't, doesn't prevent anything. Once the damage happens, then you have to go to court, and most of the time, it has to go to the State Supreme Court to actually be forced. So that's just a knowledge of what I've looked, because that's one thing I'm concerned about is the environment, so.
And to further play on him, my son, who grew up here in Peach County from the tiny institute, made his Eagle Scout project with Boy Scout, the Boy Scout troop here in Fort Valley, to clean up the waterways in Mossy Creek, all the way through Byron. It actually flowed into the, uh, the Almogee River, which then follows down to lay out in St. Simon's. What a lot of people don't know is our state mammal is a northern red whale, that is their only birthing ground in the world, is at St. Simon's Island. So anything that comes in on Mossy Creek and flows down through the river and lets out there can eventually contaminate the birthing area. That was something my son worked on for four years and was honored by President Obama for in the White House.
Right, I, I think we've gotten off the questions.
So when will we be allowed to ask y'all questions, Sergeant Mosley?
BJ, you responding?
I'm just here.
I guess.
I, I have a question, and it's not all of that, I just need a clarification, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, um, I understand that we are saying Peach County authorities, correct? Is that what you're saying? Okay, I, I hear all of this that's going on, and I'm new to the area, so I'm trying to get an understanding. We were talking about the jobs and everything that this will bring to the county, and how it will boost the county, but I live in Fort Valley, dead smack, and I don't see, everything that comes out, I have to go to Fort Valley, I mean, Houston, which I'm from, to buy my grocery, I have to go to Houston, buy everything. So how is that gonna, if you build that facility and you're saying, well, we'll probably get some restaurants, da-da-da-da-da, but they're what? That is five point seven miles, four point five miles from seventy-five, that ain't nothing to just cross and go in the Houston county. So what is it really bringing to Peach? Tell me what it's gonna do for that. I, I just, that's my, that's my question.
Well, I mean, you're, you're getting into, um, your commercial real estate development just kind of marches, being this on the drum, you can't force Kroger or Lowe's or.
I understand that, but I'm not asking you that, I one hundred percent understand that, I don't wanna do the dance. I just wanna know, how is this going to support Byron and Fort Valley? That's all I need to know. All this is big, I understand what the big goal is, but I'm still wanting to know, some insight on that.
Okay, well, I'm trying to answer that question. So, you know, they look at traffic patterns and dynamics and medium incomes, and a lot of it has to do is you as a buyer, where you going? As long as you're willing to drive to Houston County, there's no motivation for them to build you another store. And they got to see that, okay, we're missing out on potential sales. And beyond that, just creating additional businesses and sales tax dollars, you know, industrial development helps offset the burden to taxpayers for all the things that we provide. Well, for an example, you know, so, you know, property taxes, you know, typical residence, you know, we learned a long time ago, one of the first things that was kind of opening for me, you take a million dollar home, it's just a million dollars. You know, the local fair share, we pay for education, just in public education is about forty-five hundred dollars per child. I would venture to say nobody in this room pays enough property taxes to pay for the full cost to put their kid in public education. Unless your property is worth about twenty million dollars, and you got, you know, two, three kids, it doesn't work. It only works because industries and businesses and companies don't have children, but they do pay taxes. And so it's a balancing act to be able to have enough of commercial industrial development to be able to help pay for the things that we need as humans, whether it be buyer, police, school, public education, so you get to have a healthy balance. And if you were in a community, they call it a bedroom community, it gets really tough with those guys, when they have a large population, but not a lot of industry to go with it. And so sometimes we get the argument, well, they're gonna put some here, and none of those people are gonna work in Peach County, that may be. But as you people, you know, residents that are already living in Peach County, that's good for you in the sense that they're gonna pay taxes, and they're gonna leave Peach County, go back to their house, and houses are making bids, they'll be educated over there, and that cost burden is not on us. So, you know, there's a lot of different factors at play, as to, you know, why this is beneficial for you as a taxpayer or your quality of life, right? Being able to shop locally and things of that nature, so.
Mr. Walker, can I ask you one thing? Like, is the biggest employer in Peach County, is that Bluebird? Would that be the law, I mean, at this point? How many, I don't know what the average salary for an employee you get there, and what is the percentage of people that work at Bluebird that live in Peach County? I mean, that's a honest, uh, just ask.
Yeah, it'd be proprietary to Bluebird at all, but that's not public information.
So you don't have any idea? Because when you're talking about bringing a big company in, I'm just curious, what would you expect in that situation? To be the percentage of people that actually were Peach County residents that were employed at this company? And what would you expect, beyond the lower level jobs, you know, the lower paying jobs? What percentage of those, like, jobs that require college degrees?
Yeah.
What percentage of those would actually be people that were residents or our children that would be employed by the company on this side? If we're gonna sacrifice the risk of environmental damage to our county, and all of this for the, for the betterment of Peach County, what would be, you know, what would be the payback to the county, to all of our children that grew up here, that are grandchildren? I mean, how many, what is the percentage that you would anticipate being hired, Peach County residents, with, I mean, with good jobs at a plant, a facility that, or are they all, are all of the higher paying jobs gonna be rolled in from, from other areas?
It's, you know, you can't, it's hard to say that without knowing what the position of skill level is required for that job, right?
Right.
But it's not just about, you know, we wanna provide opportu, it's opportunity, I mean, use that word, we don't provide jobs, we can provide an opportunity for each job. It's up to the individual, they take that opportunity. But it's also, you know, you're new neighbors, I mean, Peach County's gonna grow, whether we want to or not, and the people that are moving in, you know, are, you know, what do they look like, like, educated or not? And we, you're trying to provide good quality, you know, homes, so it's a little bit of everything. But there's no way I can give you a number on the percentage.
Roy has something over here, Roy.
I, I just wanted to get back to her question. I, I think you asked specifically about Fort Valley and Byron, I think it's, I think you have a community that is in need of good paying jobs, and a lot of the things that I see people in Fort Valley want, restroom, I mean, restaurants, shopping, that comes with the jobs to support that industry, that comes with people locating in the community who will support that. And so there's no way we can sit here and say that ultimately everything's gonna happen that way. But we are looking, or the development authority is working towards a situation where we put in place the opportunities for those things to come. They're not gonna come until you have the jobs, the salary, and the citizenry and the residential to support that. And, you know, we do, or at least I feel, that some of those people will locate in Peach County, I think a good many will, but a percentage, I, I could, there's no way, but I, I do think the spinoff from something like this can be a catalyst for the revitalization of an area that needs these jobs.
Okay, so, for, uh, Bluebird has been in Peach County how long? And then I just heard it is the number one employer and the biggest industrial, right?
Long time.
So what is the excuse? We just said higher paying jobs, and that is needed to do.
This is gonna be a debate.
I was just asking.
Well, there's no excuses.
Okay, I was just asking.
We're just, you know.
Okay, so we're not.
Got a question?
I did wanna say something, as one of the commissioners that represents Fort Valley, um, I, I won't speak on what it'll do for Byron, you know, because that's for them to determine, but as one of the commissioners that represents Fort Valley, I would like to say that, as we stand right now, there's about a thirty thousand dollar income disparity between the northern end of the county and the southern end of the county, and that thirty thousand dollar disparity is higher than the median income in the southern end of the county. And I'm always here to make sure that we do something to close that gap, because our county as a whole, whether it's Byron or Fort Valley, cannot succeed, excel, progress, grow, whatever, until we're all grown. So it's good overall for the entire county, not just Byron or Fort Valley.
I love that you said to bridge that, bridge the gap.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was asking about, how are we gonna do that? That's why I'm not hearing. Okay, I got you, you got it.
This is not directly related to all of this, but it is in a way. When I travel around the county, I see this little thing, I see that little thing, then all of a sudden here it all comes together into a plan. And I'm just wondering, and I'm sure you do, does, do the commissioners or commissioners, including Mr. Walker, have a five, ten, fifteen, twenty year plan, that kind of spells out what the plans to do going forward?
We do, it's in our comprehensive plan, we update it every, what, five years?
Every five years.
Absolute, we have a comprehensive plan.
So is it online, or how do I get it locked?
It just went through in twenty twenty, it, it just completed the five year review plans. There was many, many public hearings throughout the county that were posted on Facebook. And then it goes to a full review every ten years.
Right.
So the full review wouldn't be for, until twenty seven, maybe.
I could go there and get a copy.
I'm pretty sure it's on the line.
Hey, Mr. Mosley, um, were you gonna, like, open the floor to people in opposition?
Sure, that's, that's how we're doing it.
Yeah, I figured we were starting with Q and A, yeah, I know, I got you, I just wanted to.
Working on it, yes, ma'am.
I have a question, you know, I mentioned Paul Wood, Red, Peach County, of course, is my neighbors and myself, we wanna know if, we're not rich, okay? And we wanna know if, if your plans might include buying ours in the near future. We don't wanna keep pouring money in our homes and our properties. Like, last year, like I said, we don't have a lot of money, but I put twenty-two thousand dollars add on to my house. And I wanna keep doing this, but I don't wanna keep doing it, and then, you know, they're gonna buy it. Do I need to put my plans on hold, or?
What's that?
That's Mr. Rostow and them over there, they on the beach park. Because, you know, everybody's got their own place and their own income. We live close to where you're talking about, and we can't afford to keep adding, you're just gonna buy it up, so.
Tom, your question?
Yeah, I had a, a question, BJ, as soon as the development authority acquires this property, it goes off the tax roll. Okay, what puts it back on the tax roll? And will that, and will then, when you give incentives to companies to come in, well, a lot of times that means that they pay no property tax for a very long time.
That's right.
So what gets this back on the property tax rolls? And how, how are you gonna work that one?
Yeah, um, two questions, it's, um, valid. But, you know, the property, unless there was some type of agreement in place, economic development agreement, you know, it, once it's sold or taken title by a private company, there's a property tax liability, unless there's an agreement in place that provides for payments in lieu of taxes, which you're well aware of.
Yeah.
You know, but I'm not gonna, you say, you're saying, these, these deals are highly incentivized, and, you know, property tax reductions is part of it. But you got to understand that, that the tax liability on property for a three billion dollar investment is thirty-seven billion dollars a year. It's an unfair share for the burden they create on a local tax economy. So in order to be successful and to compete with other states and communities, you're going to have to provide some type of incentive for them to choose your side. You know, it's our job to, you know, study and research and model, anything that we may provide is still positive for Peach County.
Okay, so essentially, we'll not come back on the tax roll for a very long time.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, I counter your point, Mr. Tom, and there's a lot of, you know, property owners and some in here that, you know, have a three hundred thousand dollar home, they're in a ten year cuba, that are, you know, they're assessed like seven thousand dollars. So why should somebody that's living in a three hundred thousand dollar home be paying a hundred dollars in property taxes? So it goes both ways, and it's just on the industrial side, the people that are taking advantage of it on the residential side.
I think it's also worth pointing out, what's on the tax rolls now is not generating taxes either. Conservation land use is what form would you get out of paying tax?
Right, yeah. Some homeowners.
Well, homeowners are different.
But the farmer don't require many services, we don't, we don't pay much, but we don't ask for that.
No, I, I'm not knocking farmers, I'm just pointing out that we're conservation land.
Listen, we gotta move forward.
I won't ask anymore, probably, how's that sound?
Okay.
So, I understand that two years ago, is that the scope of the yellow, was the two year out project? You spoke earlier about this was a two year the make in? So within the two years, you refine your scope down to the red border, right? So this is a two year project, the way I understand it, okay? So this is a two year project, and Mr. Walker said he, you know, he answers to the commissioners, correct? That's who he's working for, that's what he said, right?
He ultimately works for us, he has his, uh.
So you guys were a little aware of this project, this thing ongoing for two years?
We have a board of, of, a board that he actually immediately answers to, development authority.
The government does that.
Right, yes.
Right, so, just, just to clarify, he, he backed me up on what I said, and he backed me up on what I said. So at the end of the day, Peach County Development Authority comes to you guys, they answer to y'all, through, through the chain of command, they answer to y'all.
Where are the final say?
So, gentleman over here and his team has been working on this for two years, working on this project. I'm sure he didn't start two years ago, and then showed up today and be like, hey, guys, my homework's done, you know? I guess my question is, were you guys aware of this? You don't even have to give me a yes or no, it's more of a statement. I hope that you guys were aware of this, that's all I'm asking. And that's all I'm saying, is I hope you guys were aware of the scope of this project for over two years, all right?
Who's back there, Nick, for the question?
Yeah, so I'm also trying to raise an awful business come to me, but I'm also a small business owner, but I won't be acting for a job, it's outside. But I would also have opportunity to do contracting for this business, let's make sure we have local contractors that we involve in these businesses that come to our community, so we can grow too, so we can hire local people, and that's all, just see if we can do it.
So I have a quick question, that's obviously a mega site, which y'all currently have, but you have three large areas listed on the peachtowndevelopment.com site, to include the Robbins International, which is about five hundred ninety acres, the Benjamin Hawkins Industrial, which is about six hundred acres, and the Supersod, which currently isn't zoned for anything, but in the description, it arguably says that it's an ideal industrial position. So with that being said, what's the current take rate on those current big industrial places? I believe earlier you mentioned that the Robbins International had twenty-five percent fill, what's the fill on the Ben Hawkins area? And what's the availability of Supersod, when this obviously has a lot of animosity towards its location, and those are away from everybody, off on their own as industrial?
Well, Benjamin, both Benjamin Hawkins and Supersod are privately owned, we don't own those properties. You know, we will market and try to help the property owner if we find somebody wants to take it. They're not as attractive at this site, you know, Supersod is a great site, it doesn't have rail, it, it's outside of my price range. We cannot go out there and speculate on that, you know, price dirt. Benjamin Hawkins has an opportunity, we are working on projects in that, on that property, but we don't own it, don't control it. But it has issues, topo is, is a lot more gradient, rail access is not as good, access to the property is not as good by chaff and road, it's not as good as this site. Doesn't rise to the level of the mega site, there's a creek that runs through the middle of it, so there's not, um, six hundred contiguous acres that has a large power line, it's just not the same. You know, where we have invested in Robbins, we're going through it pretty quick.
Okay, let's move forward with the people who'd like to speak in favor, so then we can get to the people who, who are not in favor of this project or this rezoning. Who else is here to speak in favor of this rezoning? Come up, you have the floor, state your name, come on.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Brandon Respris, native of Fort Valley, current resident of Byron, Georgia. I'm kind of new to this, I took a few notes, I'm gonna kind of go over, make a few points, and end that way. So, first thing, I'm for this rezoning, I'm about bringing new business to the county, mainly, to the point earlier Ms. Bryant made, to develop the southern end of the county, to raise tax revenue, to potentially reduce property tax within the county, to continue economically develop our county, while the northern portion of Peach County is growing rapidly, potentially it'll run out of rezoning property in the next five years, that could potentially extend it to Houston and V A counties. In Byron, we need to extend the growth to the southern end, as I spoke on earlier, as well as Ms. Bryant. We need to, we do depend on peaches, cotton, pecans, and other crops, but here recently, severe, severe weather issues that are happening in record numbers, increasing every year, are affecting those things. We need more tax dollars to build infrastructure, to roadways, as well as transportation for our county, mainly our county seat, Fort Valley, in my opinion. We need more tax revenue also to increase more. We need more tax revenue also to increase more in our schools. I'm a father, I have children in the school system. We need rezoning to raise tax dollars, to become more proactive in safeguarding our schools, to protect our children against potential threats. We all know there's a rising, there's an increase in gun violence in our schools, as well, as well as other potential threats in our school systems. We need to raise those tax dollars to fund the police force or the county force with those, uh, RSOs or whatever to police that. Or maybe even increase the training on these type of things, so we can better safeguard and protect our children and educators. Uh, also, uh, we could reallocate, you know, funding to hire more of those, as I just mentioned. We need more county law enforcement to maintain and sustain. There's a lot of gun violence within our county increasing, we're hearing in the news every day, outside of the schools. Okay, what better way to do these things than to rezone our property, to develop our county, so that we can compete economically within the surrounding counties in today's society and be more self-sufficient as a county, as a county in this global society? You mentioned about the railway, I used to work for Norfolk Southern Railroad. It's about twenty-two thousand miles of railway. And it's a great thing that businesses look at to reduce their costs, to get things out to the world, which we can benefit here locally, but looking at it from a more global mindset. I wanted to note that. Okay, with more jobs comes more tax dollars, more community development, which we desperately need. If anyone has a problem with growth in our county, in my opinion, that selfishness, to think of oneself versus the whole county. And that's what we need desperately in our county. Because in essence, if we don't grow, we die. And that's why I tell you, for it, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else here to speak in favor of this rezoning? One more time, anybody here to speak in favor of this rezoning? All right, who is, I know we got some here to speak against this rezoning. Who wants to be first? Come on up, state your name for the record.
I'm Chris Kaleda, uh, resident here now for about eight years in Peach County. Chris Kaleda.
Kaleda.
Yes, sir, Kaleda. All right. Live off of Hendrick Road, moved family out here about eight years ago, great community, a bunch of large property owners, but, you know, a lot of, a large portion of those folks are here tonight. I moved out here from Warner Robins for the quiet, simple life. I know it sounds silly, but man, just, you know, it's great out there, love it. I don't want to see that disappear in the future. And granted, this piece of property is really right not, it's not next to me, it's not directly right next to me. But there are families in that area that I know love that property in that area as much as I love my property. So I'm here to back them up and to make sure that it's understood by the voting committee of the commissioners that, you know, the decisions you make today is not just a one-time impact, it's not a vote today and you're done. The decision you make today is like a five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year domino effect into the future, so, you know, we don't have all crystal balls, we can't say that decision I'm making today is going to be perfect, I get that. And I know that there are, you know, there's a give and take for progress. Nothing falls out of the sky for free. Nobody gets a seventy-five thousand dollar job a year just, just because. So, Mr. Walker spoke to all the potential that this could bring, no doubt there's, there is that potential. But I guess there's a setback, is the people in your area that live there, if they stand up tonight and they come up and say, I don't want this here, those are the people you're supposed to be listening to. You're not supposed to be listening to, and no disrespect to the Development Authority, not supposed to be listening to them. I know what their job is to do, is to go out and seek, you know, revenue for the county. Because in their eyes, they're burying the county as a whole, I understand that. But at the end of the day, this is, the decision you make impacts a large number of people that are probably in this room tonight. So, and we did have one gentleman, he, he spoke well up here on the benefits to, uh, to what this will do. And not to do a scorecard, but we will see how many people are opposed to it tonight. And I would, I would appreciate if you guys would take that into account. And again, like y'all said, this is a two-year project. I would hope that y'all reached out to the community in that time being without telling them what something was, just to see how they feel about where they live. Thanks.
All right, state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, my name's Mike Cantrell. And, um, this property doesn't butt up against me, some plans in the past have. This one does not, it doesn't directly impact me, but it directly impacts my soul. I kind of feel like Peach County is standing at a crossroads. And the crossroads is one that we could travel down a manufacturing pathway and invite as many industries as possible and end up with an industrial wasteland. And you, you all have pictured that, you've seen it. And we can see that sort of wasteland emerging, and I see it emerging. There's a reason, I think, why Byron has grown the way it's grown, is because people have seen a wonderful place where they could live and where they could raise their children. I don't live in Byron, I live in the sticks, I live off of ninety-six. But I know reasons why, I have friends who moved to Byron specifically to get out of Warner Robins, to live someplace a little bit on the quiet side. Chris moved out to Peach County to be on that quiet side. Craig moved to Peach County to live in that quiet side. And I dare say I could say the same thing for just about every soul in this room. They all moved out here to be in the quiet. I guess that would number us all as selfish. And, um, so put me in as the selfish guy, no offense, brother.
I can see that.
So, but anyway, you know, so I guess we're all here en masse to voice our opposition to it. And, um, and earlier you had mentioned, you're not sure, was it BJ, was it BJ that said it? But somebody had said, um, not sure where the rumor mill started about the, uh, the solar panel thing and all that. You know, I think in, in the absence of information, people form bad opinions. And an ill-informed electorate tends to become irritable, because we don't know what's going on. I understand that, that some of the information can be readily available, but I've, I've discovered as we try to pursue that truth, we sometimes have doors that are closed to us and that we're not allowed to avail ourselves of that truth. And so I would encourage all of y'all to, you know, as best you can to, you know, please be open, and I feel like you try to be. But I just wanted to get that out there. In ninety-seven, there was a wastewater treatment facility that was going to be, be put on land out near my place. And I did a little bit of battle about that. Because at the time, they said that they were going to try to mitigate some of Wolf Oak Canine's chemical waste out on the grounds out in the middle of Peach County. And they said, once that land application facility was constructed, then they could invite a battery plant in and some other places that had heavy metal waste. And they could spray that heavy metal waste all around the Mossy Creek drainage and that it would be fine. That they could not have a point discharge facility and do a land application facility and reduce the water quality on land application to much less than point discharge. So it was, we exposed all of this, it was a big ruckus, and I hated even being a part of that, but it was one of those things that had to take place. The reason I'm bringing that up now is because I heard BJ mention something about a, a battery plant. And then I think, well, here we go again. And I'd heard rumors about that and about the, um, solar panel thing. So I contacted an engineer and asked them about if they could look over some of what we do know. And one thing that, that they had said was that, um, the, uh, the wastewater treatment facility right now is near capacity. I think that's pretty well common knowledge. And that there was some consideration about where to and how to increase the capacity of the wastewater treatment facility here in Fort Valley. They said something about either moving toward Mossy Creek, but that was out of the question. And then, um, and/or moving out toward the Flint River. And, um, he said their estimated cost would be somewhere in the order of thirty million dollars to create something like that. And I would suspect that that would be shared by us as taxpayers and by possibly whatever industry needed that sort of wastewater capacity. And it wouldn't be just flushing toilets, obviously, it would be to mitigate a lot of toxins. And that kind of bugs me. So first and foremost, my, my direct opposition is because I don't think it's wise for us to follow in the paths of so many industrial groups and cities and municipalities that have chosen that pathway and wound up with a lot of unskilled labor and nothing that really grew a county the way it could grow, when we have such wonderful potential. BJ, you used the term bedroom community, I thought it was a good term. We've got wonderful potential as a bedroom community. I've, I've shouted this from my rooftop for, for many minutes since the nineties, saying, Fort Valley is such a beautiful little town, and it has such potential for growth. And if the warm invitation was there for citizens in Warner Robins to do exactly what you see all these folks doing, I think we'd have a much different appearing county. And the southern end of the county, Shanita, I share your opinion about that. The southern end of, end of the county does need the development that the northern end is, is getting. And, but it has to come from folks like the folks behind me. And, and I don't think that manufacturing and, and inviting industry into the town is the way to do it. So I've said my piece, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mike. All right, who's, anybody else want to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Come on up.
Good evening, Danny.
Good evening, my name's Danny Sanders.
Kind of argue, I'm supposed to hear you say. Now, I won't say it, I won't be a long-winded thing. I just wanted to, can you see? I actually, I own this piece right here. And this is Mossy Creek. And this is, I guess, at some point in time, you know, maybe I was going to be approached to buy my place, to include it in this, because initially it was. And then the red line cut it out. And so my property borders what's going to be, uh, an industrial park. I don't know that you've ever really seen Mossy Creek right here. And here's future proposed wastewater treatment facility. Three or four hundred yards from that creek, probably, I'm guessing. And I brought the phone up here just to, I just wanted to show y'all something personally. This is Mossy Creek at that corner. It's that big and that pretty. That's, that's my wife and my grandson standing there in that creek. It's a corner of your industrial facility and your wastewater treatment facility that you're being asked to propose. I mean, that creek is, it's not like a little thing you, it's, it's as wide as from, from me to you, Martin, probably. And you've seen the rocks, and I take my grandson out there fishing, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful place. And to, to put in a, a thousand acre industrial, heavy industrial facility, if that is just something with me on and laying next to it, I don't agree to. And...
Now, where do you live on that?
I actually, I live, okay, if you, if you come up Lily Creek, my house is right there. And we own two hundred acres of pecans right here. And then I bought this piece last year, really to hunt on and for my grandson to grow up on and have somewhere to go, just play in the woods on the stuff. And, and, and I own part of Mossy Creek. It, it is my property line between me and Jeff Wangrath. And, um, so it is a big deal to me, it's a huge deal. You already have a lot of industrial park areas that are being unused. You know, and, and then I still have to question, if you got the grant money, is, is there something specific that's gotten to be spent on? Can you, is it, you know, I was told it was twenty-two million dollars. I could, you know, who knows with the rumor mill? But, you know, could it be spent somewhere better? And as, as the other people here with me, I mean, do we want to see, you know, a, a huge, heavy industrial facility in Peach County? And they say, and, and I know y'all know I'm telling the truth, they say it's going to bring a lot of jobs. There's jobs everywhere right now that we can't fill. I have two open myself. Every business in Fort Valley has a help wanted sign on the door. It is crazy how this country is doing with, with jobs that are vacant right now. So we're going to add a bunch more, and, and maybe they are a better paying, thirty to fifty thousand or, or whatever, you know, to start. But how can you say that when Mr. Walker's saying he don't even know what's coming? So you're putting a, a price tag on a job before you even know what the business or facility is? I just, you know, I appreciate y'all's time, because it directly affects me and my family. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Jason Anderson, uh, I rent some property that borders to it, I don't rent anything that's in the red line. But, uh, I'm pro agriculture, I've been fighting development ever since I started. I was so excited to leave Houston, thought one day I'd move and live in Peach and, uh, but you know, I got this off of your Peach County Extension site, I got everybody one. I just get tired of, like, we don't provide jobs, we don't make any money. It says we make half a billion dollars in impact. You know, sixty-two million dollars worth of peaches, pecans, sod. I know without a doubt, we're the reason Griffin's Warehouse is in business. We're the reason Five Points Fuel is here, I'm the reason Yom Tire is here every week. Smith Brother Electric, they wouldn't exist without that twelve hundred acres right there. Amptown Machine, Rupert Distribution, I can go on and on. And I find it funny, I couldn't, if I bought a hundred acres, I couldn't put two or four chicken houses up, but I could have a twelve hundred acre park. And you know, anybody can get a loan, but the twenty percent down is the hardest part. If I went to one of those owners, said, let me buy that tract from you. It's monopoly money, man, it's government money, it's tax money, it's not real money. And, uh, I, I just think if you, it's not, you can't see much of it from the road, it's, all y'all drive through it, it's beautiful. Some, some words I heard cost a grade, that's why it's the best piece of farmland in Peach County. You know, unique property, it is unique. I drive through it twice, three times a week, you know, it's flat. I just, I hope it ain't a conflict interest, but, uh, my profession comes first. So do what you want with it.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Haupt, and I live on fifty-one Fire Tower Road, right on the corner of ninety-six and Fire Tower. And what I'd like to say is that as you bring industrial in and usurp agriculture and you, you, you're going to end up with industrial all the way in the Fort Valley eventually. And then if those industries have problems, you're going to see them close, and you're going to see blights, okay? And this is irreversible. Once you go down that path, you have blight. I mean, talk to people in Detroit, talk to people in different areas where manufacturing jobs or certain jobs, winterize, okay? We bring in a solar power and somebody comes up with something that puts that out of business. I mean, who thought that, you know, that we'd have cell phones in our pockets that are stronger than the first computer we had? So what I'm getting at is, be careful that you go down this path where there's such beauty in Fort Valley right now and turn it into concrete, asphalt and buildings. And now your children, that's all they have to look at. I mean, let's just be careful of what we do, because there's no going back, why don't you do this?
All right, is there anybody else here to speak against this rezoning? One more time, anybody here to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? Okay, come on up.
So I didn't prepare anything. My name is Dani Husevich. I share a driveway with pure flavor. We moved out here for the peace and quiet, now my neighbor, well, it's perpetual daylight in my house for six months a year. My other side of my driveway is not maintained. I have three tractor trailers a night parked outside my bedroom window a hundred feet away, and they run all night long. So, I can blackout the windows, but that, the noise is, I mean, it's ridiculous. I've gotten used to the light, my chickens have gotten used to the light, but I don't want them to have, to deal with what I have, what I'm listening to all the time. Like, that's all I'm going to say.
You're good, Jenny. You're good.
Thank you.
Bless your heart.
Could we, I'm sorry, could we have your name again?
Jenny Husevich.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Come on up.
I sat there saying, I'm Tanya Bunton. I was Tanya Clouda. I grew up out on that piece of, I'm 56 years old. I grew up on that piece of property. Part of the land that is being purchased was the original part of my father's farm. So, I have a lot of sentimental attachment to that whole area out there anyway. But the thing that I was going to point out was, the fact that BJ, Mr. Walker, said that industry now, the environmental impact of industry now is not the same as it used to be. Because it's all regulated by EPA and Georgia Environmental Protection Agency, that they're all in control of this. Well, part of this property there that butts up to Fullwood Road across from the Roscoe's, years ago, when I was a child, and that property was owned by my family, a crop dusting service leased that land and had a crop dusting field, I had an airstrip there. And at that time, they were there seasonally because all farmers used crop dusters back in those days, and it was the Tinnels, those are the family that owned it. Well, at some point, there came in a question of some contamination on that property. And Mr. Tinnell, Jimmy Tinnell, and it was after the fact that they were not using the property anymore, Mr. Tinnell was required by EPA to come in and remove a certain amount of soil off that land, and it satisfied whatever the requirements for EPA were at that point. Well, my grandfather passed away, gosh, now it's been, I don't know, 20, not 20, 15 years ago, what, 2004, however long, oh, that's him. He passed away in 2004. Well, at that point, the property then went to my grandfather's estate, which consisted of my father and his sister. Property was sold off, things were done, and it was brought out at that point, that there was still some contamination on that land. And EPA was called in. And the land, which would still be in my family's name had it not been a result of the contamination of the airstrip that existed when I was a child and back, that now EPA had to come in and the property had to be cleaned to a much higher level of specifications and contaminants removed, and water was contaminated, and people that had been on wells out there now had to go on city water, I think the Roscoe's had too, because they found contamination in their wells and, I mean, people on Fullwood Road. It was a huge mess, and it went through every penny of my grandfather's estate. And then, some, because then it was taken over by the state of Georgia, and the contamination was, the remaining portion was cleaned to it, but it still can't be used. There's still a portion of that property that is not safe for use on there. So, my point in saying this is, you stand here and they say to you, well, we don't know what's going to be, what manufacturing company is going to go there, but it's going to be safe. But you can't, you can't say that. Because years ago, EPA said, oh, this is safe, Mr. Tinnell, you've pointed up to what we said. But indeed, he had not pointed up to a safe level, because now, people were drinking water that had contaminants in it, all the wells on our property had to be checked. I mean, so much soil had to be removed, the land is still not safe, a certain area of the land is still not safe to be occupied. So, you can't come here and say, we're going to put in a battery manufacturing plant, or we're going to build automobiles, or we're going to do this. But it's going to be safe, because you don't know that it's going to be safe. You know that the things that they're making can be toxic to the people around you, and they're going to follow the specifications that exist now. But 15 years from now, you may find out that everybody that occupies that area has got cancer, because it wasn't safe. So, to stand here and blow that question off and act like that that's fine, and that you, who are all elected representatives of all of us, and not take that into consideration is just a little problem. And to go and do this when you don't even know what is going to go onto the property is another issue. And like I said, I have a lot of sentimental attachment to that. So, if you said to me now, Tanya, what is your biggest problem? I would say, because I get on my golf cart and I ride down the road for entertainment at night, and I see the deer, and I like it that way, because I've done that my entire life, and that's what I want. That would be what I stood here saying to you. But the biggest issue would be, what is the impact? What is the impact on the future, when you don't even know what kind of plants you're inviting into the land? So, that's it.
All right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition to this rezoning?
How many are in opposition? Just put your hand up, I'm just curious, because not everybody's going to speak there. I was just curious.
One more time, anybody else to speak in opposition to this rezoning? All right, being none? All right, what's your question?
I would like to ask one thing of BJ again.
Sure.
One of the main things that I can hear, and that is, oh, definitely understandable on the environmental issue because of farmland, and I get that, because, and I grew up smack in the middle of farmland in Macon County, and have seen the other side where there is, it was once flourishing, gradually dried up, and very few left. And there was other support industry that popped up, fortunately. But I get the environmental issue. I'm actually on the Middle Georgia Clean Air Coalition, and there are things that, like even the EV, you know, electronic vehicle, battery issues, you know, they don't have everything, I mean, I know mine, they don't have all the I's and all the T's crossed. But my question would be, if whatever comes in, will there be a checklist for whatever it is, whether it's things to do with sound? Like, I also get that, I don't think Jenny's hearing any more, but live close to railroad tracks, and I know what that humming is like, so. But will there be that opportunity for a checklist of what the requirements would be for any industry that comes in or that we look at?
Yeah, there could be. You want to get involved with, you know, the development authority or county commissioner, whether it be ordinances or, you know, agreements that are particular to that deal itself. But I would caution you, I mean, we do not want what the county commissioner wants to get involved with regulating environmental issues. That's not your role, and it's not the liability that you want and to be involved in. You know, there's state and federal guidelines to deal with that. If you want to talk about, you know, buffers and things of that nature.
Light pollution? Light and noise.
Whatever it may be, you have the opportunity to put that in the deal structure. So, yeah. I just want to say too, one thing, you know, this will be missed, I understand all those concerns, but let's not forget that the actual property owners that are requesting this rezoning, or us and the sellers, they have property rights too. And so, for them to be able to say, I have this property, and yes, it's money. And so, one day, you may want to have the opportunity to sell your property, and I hate for you to come and say, well, no, you can't do that, because I don't like what you do next to me. It's a thousand acres that's somewhat buffered, and that a farmer wants to sell, and we want to buy, so that they can use the property for the use that we want to use it for.
That affects.
And we not have rights just as much as a seller. And I, you know, one more thing too, this is just me, because I'm also a county resident, so this is not my development authority job, but I appreciate you guys coming here and speaking in opposition, just being involved in the community. And you asked about our plan, but when I was involved with the five-year facilities plan, and there were four or five meetings on fire and safety and education, I was probably one of the only people in the room. Nobody in the community came out and wanted to share their vision of the things that y'all complained about today. So, what I would ask y'all to use the same passion that y'all are showing, not by what you don't want. The next time it's about to use the plan, come out and tell us what you do want, because we got to have involvement.
I think we've been telling you we'll be left alone out here. I think that's kind of what.
All right, so no more development, no more commercials, we're going to be.
I just want to say something. I do want to say something. BJ mentioned that as county commissioners, that we don't want to get involved in making environmental rules. I'm going to have to disagree with that part, because I think that as county commissioners, what we're here for is to represent the people and make sure that those people are taken care of. So, if that means having environmental rules or anything that's going to maintain their quality of life, I think that's what we're here for. So, I have to disagree with that point.
So, just quickly, what's your guess?
Well, everybody's worried about the noise and whatever is going on or whatever, and I know y'all don't want to hear it. But the thing is, they put all this little noise-making thing in the middle of the roads if you pass in the lane and all that. That keeps us awake. I mean, I did try that. But that's going to save people lives.
You're the, I used to be a good driver.
And you're going on there, and you're going to be safe. So, there's options out on everything, and it is water, and sometimes we have to.
BJ, I sense your frustration, and I hate that. None of us want you frustrated.
Okay, let, let's, we're going to move on. Time for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've been in favor of this project from the beginning. I think that we don't have an obligation to Peach County as a whole to make sure that we secure the future of Peach County, and we are the area that primarily will benefit in an area that we've been job and I would move to accept the recommendation of the planning on zoning board and move approve.
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second that.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve the recommendation of the county planning zoning board to rezonate this property from RAG to M2. Am I stating that correctly, Roscoe?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same side.
Thank you.
That's it. That concludes our public hearing. We will now go into executive session for some board appointments, personnel matter, and the lands and acquisitions.